Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started. We'll call the meeting to order. Mayor Lewis will be here in just a few minutes, and when he arrives, he will be back in charge. We'll go ahead and start with item number one. Does anyone have any items on this Thursday's agenda that they would like to discuss in more detail? Councilmember Cook? Anything? Councilmember Taylor? Item number five. Do you have some specific questions? Councilmember Taylor, would you like to have someone come up and give a little presentation? What are you looking for?
I just wanted to update this a little bit with input that we received from the Parks and Rec Board, if I may.
Great, that would be great. Thank you.
The item here is related to going out to the street to get some feedback on those parcels that we reviewed at the retreat. And one of the things that we talked about at the Parks and Rec Board, and Rod, you can colorize this here once I finish here, is that we want to ask for more than just private partnership agreements. You know, if there's someone that could come in and wants to buy the whole thing, we want to be open to everything, public-private partnerships included. So originally, they had some of this wording in their original motion, but they wanted to, and I talked to them about it, about having more than just a discussion about private-part, public-private partnerships with these RFPs. And so, Rod, I don't know if we want to have for Thursday just updated wording that the Parks and Rec approved, because you kind of smoothed that out a little bit as we talked. Would you like to add anything?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. This item is really to go out for solicitations as part of a process, a vetting process, if you will, to ascertain which is the best method to proceed. We know we can always sell the property, but in making sure that council has all the information necessary to make an informed decision about the different options for these properties, we felt it very prudent, based upon the level of interest that we received on these properties, to go out and solicit potential ideas and bids, really, or proposals for reuse of the properties. So that one option would be sell it, of course, and get the money at one time, but this particular effort is to see if there's any sustainable approaches that would give us revenue for a longer period of time that's more sustainable, just as an option for council. None of the solicitations will be binding to council. I think that's another very important point, Councilmember Taylor, that they won't be binding. In other words, we can look to see what we get and then accept or reject or further analyze.
So do you think that we need to change something on the agenda, or would you just want to bring the seventh Thursday's meeting?
I just wanted to make sure that we have wording in the RFP that goes out to accept all types of agreements, including sale, not just limit it to public-private partnerships. And I just wanted to make sure that the council knew that the Parks Board was on board with that, and just wanted to make that comment. So in terms of a motion, I don't know. I'll look at it, and if there's ways that we need to round that out so that we don't restrict the RFP just to certain types of agreements, then maybe I'll just amend it at the DAS.
Perfect.
Vice Mayor, just a clarification, Councilmember Taylor. If the decision is ultimately to sell the property, and Mike, you have to correct me here, we can't sell it through this process. If the decision is, if somebody makes us a couple of good options to say we want to sell the property, we'd have to follow statutes and do a competitive bid and other things and appraisal to sell the property. This wouldn't automatically, if council says after they receive these, we think our best option is to sell it, then staff would begin a separate process to go through the sale of that property. Mike, is that?
Vice Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
And then if I could also add, part of this process also, council, is to do an appraisal of these properties so that we know what the value will be from a lease arrangement and what the value will be if we decide to sell it and go through the sale process.
Thank you for the input. I do think it's important that we have the options available to determine what the best long-term impact is for the residents of Gilbert. Any other comments on that item? Councilmember Peterson?
Just wanted to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Taylor. I have similar interests. I think that they'll be served, though, through the process. As is stated, we'll get appraisals, make sure we know the value, and if we think the fair market value is more interesting to us or valuable to the taxpayers, then some partnership that people are proposing, we can make that decision at the time. So I think there's opportunity to address what we're looking for.
Thank you. Any other items? Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember Daniels? Peterson, any other items? Great. We'll move on to item two in the agenda. This is a presentation and discussion on the Town of Gilbert Employee Safety Program.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Leland Frishy. I'm the Risk Manager for the Town of Gilbert, and I'm grateful to be in front of you, presenting you an update on the safety program. So the safety program started when Patrick came onboard, and that started when he made safety one of the strategic initiatives for our organization. I'm here in front of you today because of some questions we've had when we had our renewal on the workers' compensation and, more specifically, the E-mod going up, and so I'll be covering those with you today. And as I had mentioned, it started with Patrick coming onboard and making safety one of our strategic initiatives, and this is an example of our FY organizational strategic goals. And you can see, under high-performing government, it is our employee safety initiative or strategy. So this is one of the goals that supports our high-performing government. In this process, we've embraced four disciplines of execution. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. We use that to develop what we refer to as a wildly important goal, or a WIG. And so this WIG is actually a year old now, but it's still on point. So we're going to, our goal is to reduce the frequency and severity of injuries to employees by 10% per year for the next five years. We've also aligned with the safety program with the Performance Management System, which is the STAR Performance Management Program. And we did that by developing a functional competency, and the functional competency is a commitment to safety. Standby. Testing? Okay, I think we're good. So as I was mentioning, the functional competency is a commitment to safety, and the key to this is that all staff is held to this one functional competency, and it is measured in their performance achievement. So this is for all employees, all supervisors, all managers, and all directors. This is our step-by-step process for our refocus on safety, and the first step is to target some specific departments to roll it out. And during this period, we do a reset presentation, which includes a very poignant video, which is a true story of a man by the name of Charlie, who has now made safety a very important value that he follows. Step two, we do some job hazard analysis, safety audits, but we also do a five-hour leadership program for all our leadership, and I'll get into that in a little more detail. Step three is to measure, and I'll show you some of the measurements that we have as far as our dashboard, which track the frequency and severity of our incidents in real time. Step four is communication, and I put in front of you part of the promoting and branding. It's the little C card. It's the little green card in front of you, and on the back, it has some key phone numbers for environmental and safety, workers' compensation, and risk management, and it's kind of our motto of safety every day, every time. We also have some posters that go along with that to keep it fresh in everybody's mind. The step five is to review the process, and this is an ongoing review. As I said, it's a five-year goal, and we're reviewing it every year as we go forward. In four disciplines of execution, we want to focus on the lead measures, and we've identified these lead measures. Job hazard analysis, we work with the departments. We've developed a very comprehensive job hazard analysis to look at all the different functions within the different departments and divisions. We have a safety audit program where we have developed an audit check sheet where we will come through and audit. We are encouraging the departments to audit themselves as well, and so you'll see in the dashboard, there is a component that shows how we're doing on our audits. And then there's, we developed a team called the Hazard Elimination Advisory Team, and that's kind of a ground-up to get the employees involved, and the mission of that team is to serve the organization as a resource dedicated to the elimination of workplace hazards before they result in injuries, ensuring that Gilbert employees are safe every day, every time. Okay, and I've talked a little bit earlier about E-mod. An E-mod, I'm going to try and give you a brief overview of E-mod. It's a very complicated calculation, but basically, an E-mod is an Experience modifier that is developed by the National Council on Compensation and Insurance, or NCCI. It is a lagging indicator. It's a three-year lagging indicator, and I'll get into that in just a little bit. So the factors that they're looking at are the number of employees and where they work, their associated payroll, and the loss experience. The last jump in the Experience modifier was primarily driven by our loss experience. And so this is our compelling scoreboard, or what we refer to as our dashboard, and as you can see, we had mentioned the frequency and the severity. Well, for frequency, it's called the Incident Rate Ratio, and that's the IRR. That talks about, this is showing our trend for the last 12 months, and the DART, or the Days Away Restrictions and Transfers, indicates severity, so how bad the incident is and how long they're away from work. And so as you can see on this chart, well, the first part of it is kind of our speedometer. And while we're still in the red, we have made significant changes, and we have met our goal of 10%. But where we want to be is we want to be in the green. We will have, as you can see, we started, again, it's a lagging 12-month period, this diagram is. So July fell off for last year, but it's on for this year. And we actually started in July with injury, an IRR rate of 9.7, and you can see on that chart, on the bottom chart, we actually ticked up right after July. So August, we went up, and then we went progressively down on the IRR, and just recently, we've had a slight tick up. But to date, from July 1 to July 1, we've reduced it from 9.7 to 8.7, which is 10% reduction. It's the same experience with the DART, and when we started in July 1 of '14, our DART rate was 6.6, and it is currently 5.7. That is a reduction of 13.64%. And so, again, we've met our goal, but as you can see, we're still in the red. So we need to get, we need to continue on our goal. It's a journey, and it's going to take a lot of work. This is another part of our dashboard where you can see a little more specific information as far as the number of incidents that happen by month, and then down at the bottom, and it's kind of hard to see, you can actually see the incidents by department. And this is a dashboard that is live, active, and you can kind of drill down into the type of incidents by department, and again, it's real-time information. I mentioned the Leading the Way to Safety Leadership Class. This is a five-hour class that's developed specifically for supervisors, managers, and directors. We have launched Phase Two. Phase One, we had all the directors participate in the Phase One, and so far, we've had quite a few directors participate in Phase Two with the expectation of 100% participation. What this class entails, it's a four-part class, and we've broken it down into manageable parts. The first part is introduction to safety leadership. The second part is situational awareness. The third part is safety coaching, and the fourth part is hazard control. And again, it's a five-hour, very interactive, a lot of processes are gone through, root cause analysis, that type of thing. It's a very good class. We've got a lot of good feedback on it. We feel that through these efforts with a refocus on safety, we're confident that we will continue to meet our goal of reducing the incident severity and frequency by 10% a year, per year, for the next five years. And with that, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. Are we modeling this after some other program, or is this internally developed? How did we get to this place?
That's a great question. We actually kind of saw this coming, and so we started way back in 2013 with a leadership program that we developed in part from our insurance company. They've been a very wonderful resource for us. It was called Leading the Way to Safety in the Workplace. We got that almost completed when we had a new team member come onboard and brought, his name is Terry Petco, and he is from General Industry, and he brought some experiences that had us, as I will say, press the pause button. We looked at it. We kind of reevaluated it. We elevated it above the supervisor level. And so in part, to answer your question, it's yes, it's, the leadership portion is modeled after the Travelers Program, but we also had a lot of good guidance from Terry and as well as our Director, Kerry Bosley, for the functional competency piece.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Lee, so as this program moves forward, how are we making sure that the implementation of these, which are very important and safety first, isn't deteriorating the service levels of, you know, the various departments that, you know, we have commitments for certain standards in our community?
Well, the only way I know to answer that is that our service levels will deteriorate if we're not doing this, because instead of picking up, and I'll use solid waste as an example, instead of picking up, you know, the thousand cans per day, if we have an incident, we're only going to be picking up 900 for that particular route. So we look at this as an improvement to the service levels, and it's why it's under the high-performing government goal.
Mayor, if I may?
Please, and then we'll go here. Is your comment more related to that?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Ken, come on up.
Mayor and councilman Taylor, one of the ways in which you do that is you incorporate safety in the operation of your functions. And so when we develop our standard operating procedures, safety becomes a vital component of that, and so that allows you to maintain safety, but not at the expense of efficiency. And so that's the approach that we're moving forward in terms of our standard operating procedures. You're consistent, teaching our employees to be consistent in the process, and that is involved in safety. Safety is not a separate component. It becomes an active component of the process of training, development, and evaluating our employees. And so that's the approach.
Please.
Mayor, if I may, and Ken and Lee, appreciate, thank for that feedback. When I was digging into the causes of the delays in bulk trash pickup a few months ago, we were all getting the calls, you know, one of the things that was identified as one of the reasons why they weren't getting the trash picked up on time, bulk trash, was because of the new safety programs and one of the, because I was asking the question, what standards are you holding to? And they were talking about, well, once you pick up a certain amount of tonnage in a particular day or week, then it's not safe to continue to do that. And like I said, safety first. I don't want to compromise safety at all, but also, you know, we have the, there was some bulk trash that was going on two or three weeks after the schedule. I know we're kind of identifying that. So Mayor, I'm just kind of bringing that up as, just giving some feedback since we're on the topic and love the program, want to see it very robust and everything below the green lines, no question about that. And then maybe, Kelly, I'm just kind of looking at you, because I know Six Sigma was under your department prior. I think Amber has some great tools that can harmonize with this to make sure the performance levels are met while everybody goes home with the same number of fingers and toes, you know, as they showed up to work that day.
And we noted, as we've been carrying notes, August, bulk trash was picked up on the day safely. All right. Other questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Just wondering if we can get some more information about what kind of injuries, some kind of a report. You mentioned there's like, you can drill in on some of those by department, but can we get access to some of that? I'm just curious about what kind of things we're seeing.
Well, the trend that we're seeing is an increase, well, a continued increase in strains and sprains, and that's pretty much across the board. And that's everything from, you know, whether it's a training issue for firefighters pulling hoses, or training in PD, or somebody just slipping and tripping in the back of a vehicle that they're maintaining. So that's the trend as far as the injuries go?
I might ask for more information offline, but thank you.
Oh, that's fine. Absolutely. Happy to help.
Councilmember Cook?
As part of the safety, I know we're talking about human safety, but what about private property and safety? Are vehicles running around through town, you know, potentially damaging private property, you know, running into parked cars or, you know, property like that? Is there anything as it relates to your studies and analysis related to private property?
Thank you, Councilman Cook. We look at those as the same. Private property, it's all incidents that need to be looked at to see if they're avoidable and how we can effect positive change to ensure that that doesn't happen. And all of those things are reported. We're very good at our reporting.
Do you have dashboards for that, where you have incidences of private property damage?
We do not have a dashboard for that.
Other questions or comments? So is it fair to say, as a council, based on Lee's presentation, we now see what we need to see? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
We didn't even get a ding on that one.
That's right.
Oh, we got a ding on it, okay. Item number three, Town Manager Banjo, are you the leader of that one?
Mayor, I am not. I'm going to ask Jessica from our, Marlowe.
That works. That's called delegation.
Our Water Department to come up.
Thank you. Jessica, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name's Jessica Marlowe, and I am the Water Manager here at the town. I was asked to come here today to give you some information on fluoridation of our water supplies in Gilbert. Just as a little background, fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral that's released from rock formations into the air, soils, and water. So we do have naturally occurring fluoride in all of our water supplies in the town. The regulations that we follow, in 1962, the Department of Health and Human Services made a recommendation for fluoride levels in water for a range of .7 to 1.2 milligrams per liter for optimum health benefits. In 2015, the Health and Human Services Department revised that recommendation to a target of .7. The town historically has fed .7 milligrams per liter as its target. So with the update and recommendation from the Department of Health and Human Services that came just earlier this year, we didn't make any changes to the fluoride feeds at our drinking water plants. We're also regulated by the EPA, who sets maximum contaminant level goals and maximum contaminant levels for different contaminants in the water. Fluoride has a maximum contaminant level of 4 milligrams per liter, and a contaminant, according to the Safe Drinking Water Act, is anything in water that's not an H2O molecule. So it could be a particulate of sediment or sand. It could be a chemical. It could be a metal, arsenic, fluoride, disinfection byproducts. It could be bacteria. Doesn't matter what it is. And when we say contaminant, it kind of has a negative connotation, but it's really just anything in the water. So just to kind of summarize, the fluoride levels in our water supplies, in untreated Central Arizona Project water, which is the water that goes to the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant, naturally occurring fluoride levels are .3 to .5 milligrams per liter, and we increased that to the .7 milligram per liter target set by the Department of Health and Human Services. In untreated SRP water, which goes to our North Water Treatment Plant, the range is anywhere from .4 to 1.3 milligrams per liter, and that's because that's a combination of surface water and groundwater, so the levels can vary a little bit more. And we also target .7. If the water coming into the plant goes to .6 or higher, then we stop feeding fluoride so we don't overfeed at that location. And then in our groundwater, we also have just naturally occurring fluoride that we don't add any additional fluoride to, and those range from .4 to 1.2 milligrams per liter. About half the wells we have in the system are already over that .7 target, so we wouldn't be adding anything to those, to those locations. And that's just kind of a background on fluoridation process in the town and the levels that we see at our facilities.
Let's leave the last slide up. Vice Mayor.
So question, and I know the answer to it, but just for those in the audience, a number of years ago, the voters approved the idea of adding fluoride to the water to equal that .7 or whatever the government recommended limit is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so in Gilbert, we don't, we as a council, for example, we can't stop fluoridating the water. We can't make that vote. That's based on a voter approval, maybe this is for Mike Campbell. That's voter approved, so we don't have a say as to whether we add fluoride or not. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct.
So with the help of some of our citizens, I don't know if someone else has a question. I'm ready to move forward and present an idea here. With help from some of our citizens and our legal team, we have come up with what I think would be an appropriate statement to put on our water bills. If someone can put it on the overhead, that would be great. And of course, we have our yearly water quality report that goes out and talks about what's in our water, and people can go online at any time and look at that. What I'm recommending is that we put this on our monthly water bill, those that are sent to the residents. What is, what each of the councilmembers have, the first page is just this statement, and then behind it, the additional page is what comes up in the search results. So when it says on that last line, if you want to learn more about it, go to the CDC.gov, search for fluoride, and you'll notice there's all kinds of articles about fluoride that say all different sorts of things as to what the appropriate amounts are, whether you should have it, whether you shouldn't, but that gives you a pretty good idea as to what exists out there on that CDC.gov website. And so my hope is that we can add this to the water bills. And so my hope is that we can add this to the water bills, the monthly water bills, and I think it gives our residents an idea as to what the fluoride amounts are, and also if they have additional questions, they can either look at our water, annual water quality report, or they can go to the cdc.gov and get additional information.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Would that be, I don't happen to get the paper version of the water bill, I get the electronic email. So would it be also included in the email that everybody gets, or is it only the paper version?
So as for now, in talking to town staff, it would only be in the paper version. Depending on the system that is used going forward for the electronic versions, we may or may not have that ability. But as of now, that ability does not exist for the electronic water bills.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I have a quick question on the parts per million versus the other chart. Was it milligrams per liter? What was the other?
I think it's same difference for difference, but I'm not the...
Is that the same thing?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, parts per million and milligrams per liter is the same unit, so.
Thank you for educating me. So on this, I think this is fine. In some ways, I feel like we've got more words than we need, and yet in other ways, I feel like we have less information than I'd like to see. And maybe we'll always have that problem. But one of the specific areas I wish that we could add to this statement would just be like infant formula and fluorosis. I know that formula companies have been adding just a statement that it's recommended to not always use fluoridated water to reconstitute the formula. And that comes right from the CDC website. They recommend that, you know, if your baby does not eat or drink anything but infant formula that's mixed with fluoridated water, there may be an increased chance for mild dental fluorosis. To lessen this chance, you can use low fluoride bottled water some of the time to mix with the infant formula. The point is, I wish we could put something out there that gave them a brief, you know, statement about that. I just, some of the things there, I'm not sure are helpful, and other things, I'd like to add that. So that's my thought, we'll just kind of see what others think, but...
Councilmember Peterson, was that, if you go to the CDC site, is that one of the subbullets?
Yeah, it's overview infant formula and fluorosis. There's a...
So if you're a parent, that would at least be an option to, as they say, drill down and get into things that would be of interest to you.
That's true. I just think we could do it in very few words and probably use less words and give more information if we just reworded this a little bit. That's all I'm saying.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Peterson?
My comment with that is, I appreciate Councilmember Peterson's diligence on that issue, but I think that we need to find a place to stop. And I think that this would be the point of us saying to everybody, this is where the fluoride's at in Gilbert, this is the information for you to go and find out more information, and then you can look to see what your particular issue is. In my house, there's no infant formula, knock on wood. So I wouldn't need to know that information. I think that there's a level that we need to provide and maybe not have to go too deep. And I think that, I agree with Councilmember Peterson, this looks like an awful lot of words, but I think it says what it needs to say. After I read it, I thought it was too big and too much, but I think reading it, it makes sense.
So to my left, three of you okay with the wording? Councilmember Taylor?
I'm okay adding that if there's other support. This works fine, happy to support that, too. Maybe a question for Vice Mayor, if I may, Mayor. What was the feedback or the barriers to adding this on the electronic versions? Are they getting PDFs? I still see Paperland.
When I get my electronic bill, I simply get an email that says you have a bill available. It's very short. Short answer, I don't know what the answer is. But I was told it doesn't exist. Now, in my mind, I don't see any spot to put it, but I could be wrong.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, once we get direction from council that you want this to be in the bills, then we'll have to go through the nuances of how we get it. I think you are correct that the electronic bills, the notification is one thing, but the bill is another. It is a simple PDF of your normal bill. So there's something we can be able to work out, and we've got space constraints and other things. But before we went through all of that, we wanted to make sure that if you were all on board with this notification, then we'll work through the technicalities of how it all gets done.
And if we can get it on, I would prefer we have it on the electronic version as well.
I agree with that.
Mayor, we recently had information about the census in the electronic bill, or at least in the email where I got my electronic bill. So I'm sure there's opportunities if we all agree that we wanted to show that we could have it somewhere in the electronic, either in the email body or in some attachment or something.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, you've heard a couple of comments about maybe adding, and then some that were fine. So do you have, we're not in a formal setting to vote, but we can give direction to staff today. And since you started and you've listened to these comments, what direction do you want to give to staff?
I would like to see this implemented via the staff on the bills, both the electronic version and the hard copy. They might have some logistics to work through to get that on there and format it, et cetera, but I'd like to move forward with it.
And do you want to keep just that wording that we have up here, or do you want to consider a change?
I think we move forward with this wording here. And in the future, if it seems appropriate, then we move forward with something else.
Okay. Informal thumbs? Oh, that's a...
I just wanted to give one example of how we could shorten the length and yet we could free up some space. So for more information on Gilbert's water quality and fluoride content, please access blah, 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 blah. I don't think we need all that. You just say, for more information, go to, and then the website. And that frees up like three lines to put in something like CDC recommends when constituting, you know, a formula that you use on fluoridated water, or that it might lead to cases of fluorosis. There's some short statement about that. And then you could still have all that other stuff. I'm just saying, it could still work.
Well, Town Manager Baner, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I was just going to reiterate Councilman Peterson's statements in regards to, there's a lot of things that go into treatment of our water supply to make it safe for consumption. And that's why we have very strict requirements around annual water quality reports, and that's why we provide a pass-through on everything we do to our water supply to get it to a point from its natural state to something that's safe for human consumption. And just, there are probably a lot of things that people should educate themselves on with the water supply. There's a lot of interactions with infants or with elders or with people on medication that they really need to understand what is in there. So if, it seems simple, but there's probably, it's a great opportunity for everybody to educate themselves on all aspects of their water supply and what's being done to it. And probably would turn into a never-ending, you know, where do you draw the line in just adding one more thing? And now we've got something that no one reads because it looks like your typical fine print. So I just wanted to add that in.
Why don't we do this? This is the originator. You've got support, we'll go forward. This is not a formal setting where we're giving up or down, we're just giving direction. So if there's other feedback that people get, because rather than take time to wordsmith it, we'll let you give direction and with flexibility. And if whatever does become a final statement, which I assume today it'll be this, if it does change, let us know, and then the council could have a chance to look at that and still give input. But otherwise, we'll go with this. Does that work?
That works. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Cook?
Another aspect, we haven't, I mean, we talked about the health, safety part for the residents, but there's also the component of the corrosiveness of the way we do the fluoride with our equipment. And I didn't, you know, obviously, I would love to see, you know, the financial impact if we didn't have fluorination. You know, how many millions of dollars of savings it would be just on the equipment wear and tear? Because maybe the public doesn't know that there's a lot of, you know, in order to maintain the level of fluorination, it causes tremendous amount of, we'll call, wear and tear and damage to our equipment. If that wasn't part of our infrastructure, you know, the taxpayer could save a lot of millions of dollars.
I think that'd be interesting, and maybe that could be a question you could give an answer to in an email to the council.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Cook, that's information we could compile. We have operation and maintenance data on all the different facilities and the water plants, so we could do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
All right, I'm going to give this one last shot.
Wait, is this wording?
I'm sorry?
Is this wording?
No.
Okay.
Yes, but it's...
His wording is shut.
In response to the concern, though, that we don't know where to draw the line. So my thought would be...
Well, just a second, lobby here. Okay. So we give him direction, work with Jordan, and if he wants to change it, he has to send it to the council again. But I just think for sake of time, trying to wordsmith that with everybody here is not a good use of time.
I was just going to replace on, on fluoride could be on fluoride-sensitive populations may be found out. That's all. That's all I was going to suggest.
You heard that, thank you. All right, gen item number four. All right, let's go back to gen item one. You'll understand why I went back to gen item number one. It is time for Vice Mayor Ray to introduce the scouts. On Thursday, on Thursday. Assignments.
I don't see too many scouts in here.
And Councilmember Taylor, if you could accept assignment number one, and Councilmember Bridget Peterson to accept assignment number two. And the rest will all be on deck, just in case you're needed. Is there anything else that needed to come up in this study session? Study session adjourned, well, Thursday, just a reminder, Thursday at 5:00. I almost got through it. Thursday at 5:00, executive session, and student citizen of the month at 6:30, and then we'll have our council session at 7:00. Study session adjourned.